We're going to get started here if you want to take your seats. Good morning. It being nine AM, I'll call to order the McHenry County Board Committee of the whole meeting of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and Ms. Campbell will lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, could you call the role, please?
Pamela Althoff. Carolyn Campbell. John Collins. Joseph Gotamaller. Terry Grino. Eric Hendricks. Carl Kaminsky. James Kearns. Deana Krieger. Matthew Kunkel. Brian Sager. Michael Shorten. Michael Scala. Larry Smith. Patrick Sullivan. Paul Thomas. Gloria Van Hoff. Tracy Von Bergen. Chairman Bueller.
Here. We have a quorum. I will entertain a motion to allow Mr. Hendricks to attend remotely. Ms. Althoff makes the motion. Mr. Sager seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Welcome, Mr. Hendricks. In lieu of my comments today, we have the annual State of the County address, so.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's once again an honor and a privilege to present the annual State of the County address for twenty twenty-five to the McHenry County Board and the people of Mc.
Stay tuned.
Good morning. It's once again an honor and a privilege to present the annual State of the County address for twenty twenty-five to the McHenry County Board and the people of McHenry County we serve. This is the fifth State of the County address I have given since first taking office in twenty twenty-one. Having four of them under my belt offers the gift of hindsight when it comes to everything we've accomplished together. As one example of many, I again come to you from the McHenry County Sheriff's Office Regional Training Center in Cary. We purchased the old village hall from the village for one dollar and renovated it into a much-needed training facility for our sheriff's deputies and law enforcement and first responders countywide. This setting is the perfect backdrop for my message for twenty twenty-five. Collaboration, fiscal prudence, and results. We work together, we're smart with our money and investments, and we continue to see the positive fruits of our labor. I would like to start my address by once again welcoming our newly-elected officials who were sworn in at the start of December. County Board members Patrick Sullivan, John Collins, Deana Krieger, and Paul Thomas, and our new state's attorney Randy Freeze. And just introducing these new and fresh faces gives me the opportunity to tout one of our many twenty twenty-four achievements. Last fall, we opened the new McHenry County Election Center, giving our county clerk's office a dedicated facility to run our elections. For too long, County Clerk Joe Tyrio and his talented and dedicated staff were constrained by the available space at the county administration building, and his office partnered with us to find a solution. We leased and renovated sixteen thousand five hundred square feet of existing space, saving significant money over building a brand-new facility, and we put it to the test right away. More than eighty percent of McHenry County's more than two hundred thousand registered voters cast ballots in the November fifth presidential election, and let me tell you, this election ran very smoothly. A small investment in the new election center reaped big rewards. The twenty twenty-four election also gave McHenry County's voters a chance to reduce county government's share of their property tax bill. The county board put the power to lower property taxes into the public's hands by placing a referendum on the March primary ballot, asking whether to replace the property tax levy to fund mental health with a quarter percent sales tax. Voters approved the measure, and McHenry County subsequently eliminated the levy, bringing measurable property tax relief this year. While the initial revenue from the sales tax has not yet met projections, the McHenry County Mental Health Board in charge of dispersing funding to mental health and developmental health agencies is in a much better position to fund mental health needs. McHenry County's sales tax revenue historically increases year over year, while county government's share of property tax revenue has historically decreased. And because there was a period during which the mental health board was collecting both the property tax levy and the sales tax, they have built a substantial reserve with which to fund their agencies until sales tax revenues catch up with projections. While it is vital that the county government seeks to cut costs and lower taxes wherever possible, the indisputable fact is that nothing contributes to tax relief more than robust economic growth. As our commercial and industrial base grows, the property tax burden is lessened. New, quality jobs are created, more money is spent, and the more tax revenue is received. In twenty twenty-four, McHenry County made a number of huge strides towards growing our economy. It practically warrants and address all its own. At the end of May, Mark Picos took the helm as executive director of the McHenry County Economic Development Corporation, injecting new energy and tremendous knowledge into our partner organization. A lifelong Woodstock resident, Mark was president of a small business for nine years before becoming the manager of the Illinois Small Business Development Center at McHenry County College, while always finding the time to serve on local business and civic boards. He knows what startup businesses need to grow and what established businesses need to thrive, and this, combined with his lifetime familiarity with McHenry County, makes him a perfect fit. Mark hit the ground running. One of his first priorities was making sure that job creators knew that McHenry County is a great place to start or expand a business, and he worked with county government to create Rise and Thrive, a five-part video series showcasing McHenry County's tremendous assets for employers. You can watch these videos on the county website at mcHenrycountyil.gov or our YouTube channel, McHenry County Meetings. The videos highlight our manufacturing potential, the awesome infrastructure system giving us access to worldwide markets, our growing tourism and leisure sector, and our unmatched workforce development network. When it comes to workforce development, McHenry County took a giant step forward last September with the opening of the new Foglia Center for Advanced Technology and Innovation at McHenry County College. This state-of-the-art facility, featuring forty-five thousand square feet of open concept class space outfitted with the newest equipment and technology, specializes in teaching skilled trades and innovation, giving McHenry County manufacturers a steady pipeline of trained workers, as well as another place for their current employees to learn new skills. McHenry County College has long been an integral partner when it comes to job training and economic development, and twenty twenty-four was their year to shine, and in many more ways than just the Foglia Center. The center was one of the first recipients of a grant through our Advanced McHenry County Initiative, which invested almost thirty million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act funding directly into thoughtful and impactful programs that would tangibly improve our communities. It was just over three years ago, in twenty twenty-two, that the county board allocated MCC one point six nine million dollars to cover more than half the cost of the Foglia Center's equipment. Later that year, another seven hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred dollars advanced McHenry County grant to MCC and the Manufacturing Pathways Consortium funded a three-year program partnering area high school students curious about manufacturing careers, with manufacturers offering paid summer internships. A total of two hundred and eighty-one job placements took place with thirty-three area manufacturers over the three-year period that ended last summer, and more than a few of those students went on to full-time jobs with those same employers. It's my pleasure to report that this successful program is continuing. The Illinois Community College Board has agreed to fund it going forward. In fact, the application period for this summer began earlier this month. The Foglia Center was MCC's second ribbon-cutting in as many months that will turbocharge our ability to train the next generation of skilled workers. On August first of last year, the college welcomed students to its new university center. Located next to Woodstock Square, the facility allows students to pursue four-year college degrees right here in McHenry County from NIU, SIU Carbondale, Aurora University, and Roosevelt University. And there's more. The building is also home to the MCC Catalyst Campus, which hosts the Career Spark Center to help people launch and advance their careers, and the Talent Impact Center to help employers train their workers with new skill sets to help them strengthen their workforces. For now, it is also home to the Illinois Small Business Development Center. In the coming months, it will relocate to the MCC main campus, right along with the MCEDC, which also moved to the MCC main campus. Two of our premier organizations dedicated to helping our businesses grow and thrive will therefore be right next to one another, partnering and pooling their resources to take their missions to the next level. As long as we're talking about the Catalyst Campus, it hosted in October the first meeting of the newly-resurrected Economic Development Growth Experts, or EDGE, group. The group is made up of Chamber of Commerce presidents, municipal economic development leaders, and other major workforce contributors with the goal of advancing and coordinating regional economic growth. Thank you to Mark and to our county coordinator, Shaylan Daigle, for getting the group back together. Talking about working together to grow the economy for everyone is a great place to wrap up talk about jobs and the economy. More than two years ago, McHenry County agreed to join the Greater Chicagoland Economic Partnership, along with Cook County, the Coller Counties, and the city of Chicago, to pool our world-class resources together to attract businesses and investment for the advancement of all. We have now entered the third and final year of our agreement, and GSEP's leadership, along with their partners at World Business Chicago, are hard at work crafting the next phase of bringing the businesses of the world to McHenry County and the rest of GSEP's member governments. I'm enthusiastic about the opportunities that this will present. As I said in my introduction, collaboration and fiscal prudence get results. But as important as growing the economy and jobs is to McHenry County's future, it is equally paramount to work together to improve the health and welfare of the people of McHenry County. It's not enough to create great jobs in McHenry County. We also have to do the best to ensure that our workers can afford to live in McHenry County. Last summer, we reached a significant milestone in pursuit of this goal. In July, we joined the city of McHenry and our partners at the Housing Opportunity Development Corporation, North Point Development Corporation, and the Illinois Housing Development Authority in breaking ground on the Taylor Place Apartments. When completed, Taylor Place Apartments will create fifty housing units available to individuals and families whose incomes fall within thirty and eighty percent of the county median. These units will include energy-efficient appliances and wireless internet, and the common amenities will include a fitness center and an outdoor play area and a community garden. And yet another shining example of collaboration and public-private partnership, we contributed eight hundred thousand dollars in advanced McHenry County funding to this project, and we helped ensure together another one point two million dollars from the federal government. As I had said when I had the honor of speaking at the groundbreaking, we're taking a small but very important step toward ensuring that the workers who make McHenry County go, the workers who patrol our streets, educate our children, grow our food, staff our businesses, and manufacture goods for customers around the world, can pay their rent or mortgage and enrich our communities with their presence. The availability of workforce housing in McHenry County is an issue we take very seriously, and Taylor Place wasn't the only step we took in twenty twenty-four. Several weeks before we broke ground in McHenry, the Workforce Housing Work Group we created in twenty twenty-three released its findings, which include that McHenry County faces a shortage of housing that's affordable for jobs located here. McHenry County is the best place to live, work, and raise a family, and we're going to continue to work hard to ensure that our workforce has quality housing options right here, close to their jobs. The Taylor Place Apartments are just one of many ways that we wisely leveraged our advanced McHenry County funding to promote the health and well-being of our residents. In October, our McHenry County Department of Health cut the ribbon on a new mobile health clinic, paid for in large part by a four hundred and fifty thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollar advanced McHenry County grant with available balances covering the remainder. This clinic will address longstanding challenges of healthcare access for people challenged by socioeconomic status or lack of transportation by bringing healthcare directly to their communities. The clinic will provide immunizations, health screenings, WIC assistance, and more. Through advanced McHenry County funding, the Department of Health also created a community health grant program to fund community health efforts and allocated a total of more than one point two million dollars to Home of the Sparrow, NAMI McHenry County, the Youth and Family Center, Cycling Without Age, Veterans' Path to Hope, Family Health Partnership Clinic, the Community Health Partnership of Illinois, Cultivating Health Ministries, Advocate Healthcare, New Directions Addiction Recovery Services, and Warp Corps. These grant awards are making a direct and meaningful impact on programs addressing homelessness, domestic violence, suicide, mental health, senior care, veterans in need, diabetes, healthy eating, and substance abuse. And when it comes to the scourge of substance abuse, McHenry County has been tackling it head-on. From the aforementioned grant to our state's attorney's offices, exemplary efforts to ensure that the pharmaceutical companies that helped create the ongoing opioid crisis help reimburse our costs for the damage they caused. Last August, McHenry County Coroner Michael Rean took the initiative to help by working with a private company to place a drug disposal bin at the Annex A building where the coroner's office is located. People can dispose of their unused medications safely and anonymously, and this service comes at no cost to the county and its taxpayers. Given that the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services estimates that about three out of four heroin users get their first experience with opioids from the medicine cabinets of family and friends, expanding citizens' ability to safely dispose of unused drugs is an important part of this fight. And while I'm talking about working together, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge other McHenry County elected officials who have come together to help advance our goals. Since taking office as treasurer, Donna Kurtz has worked hard to make sure that property owners know about the many exemptions that exist to lessen the blow of property taxes. She is currently holding workshops countywide to educate homeowners and to tell seniors about the state's Senior Citizen Real Estate Tax Deferral Program. Last August, she teamed up with county clerk and recorder Joe Tyrio to hold a workshop on exemptions, ways to pay, and how to protect their property deeds. Thank you to Mike, Donna, and Joe for being important players in our great McHenry County team. At the start of my address, I mentioned the Regional Training Center where I'm speaking to you right now, and a little of the history of the collaboration and cooperation that made it possible to finally give our law enforcement personnel a local facility where they can hone their skills. In twenty twenty-four, we made even greater investments in public safety to give our sheriff's department and law enforcement the tools they need to keep our communities safe. As part of our agreement with Cary to purchase the former village hall, village leaders also graciously agreed to give us some spare land at its Public Works campus so that we could build an indoor firearms range. Our sheriff's office has been asking for one for many years, and last May, it became a reality. Its eleven thousand square feet of training space and classrooms specifically designed and built with law enforcement training in mind. The days of our sheriff's deputies having to drive across Chicagoland to train, rent private ranges, or shoot in January at the sheriff's outdoor range are over. Cary isn't the only local government that has partnered with our sheriff's office. This summer, when boating resumes on the Fox River and the Chain of Lakes, the sheriff's office marine unit will be patrolling the waters from a new facility in McHenry. The old facility was no longer suitable, and last year, county government and the sheriff's office worked with the city of McHenry to build it. Thank you to the McHenry City Council and city administration for their hard work and cooperation. The summer of twenty twenty-four marked the second year of operation of our groundbreaking McHenry County Police Social Work Program, which supports the sheriff's office and sixteen other participating county police departments, with six full-time social workers to help bridge the gap between law enforcement and McHenry County's network of social service providers. It was another successful year, and this program is really making a difference. Seventy-one percent of our active clients have had fewer police contacts a year after involvement with a police social worker. The Community Foundation of McHenry County graciously agreed to host the Police Social Work Program when it first started, but as the program has continued to thrive and succeed, it has become obvious that it needs a new home, and some of the available space at the Regional Training Center would be the perfect fit. We've been working closely with our representatives in Congress since the Training Center's opening to secure funding to cover the cost. In fact, just a few weeks ago, I joined Sheriff Rob Tadelman in giving a tour of the center and firearms training facility to U.S. Representative Darren LaHood. We're confident that our continued efforts will bear fruit. New facilities, of course, mean nothing without top-notch, dedicated law enforcement officers, and McHenry County is making a major investment this year. In the twenty twenty-five budget, the county board added three new sheriff's office deputies. We take fiscal prudence very seriously, and this is the first expansion of the sheriff's deputy roster in twenty years, but we take public safety just as seriously. By the way, these jobs are posted, and the sheriff's office is accepting applications through March twenty-first. If you're interested, visit mchenrysheriff.org to apply. When it comes to working together and making sure the taxpayers' dollar goes as far as it can, McHenry County shined in twenty twenty-four when it came to improving our infrastructure. Just over the border in neighboring Kane County, the Long Meadow Parkway Bridge opened to traffic last fall, officially completing the five-point-six-mile Long Meadow Parkway corridor to relieve congestion on Route sixty-two by creating an east-west bypass through Algonquin, Carpenter'sville, and Barrington Hills. As the final stages of the building of the bridge began, workers took down the toll signs because we helped ensure the tolls elimination with a one million dollar advanced McHenry County grant to help cover the outstanding amount due so that charging the fee to cross the bridge was no longer necessary. This wise investment will save daily commuters hundreds of dollars a year and encourage motorists to take the bypass, which not only improves travel times, but also helps boost business and commerce reliant on transportation. Work will start soon on the second and final phase of the Randall Road Improvement Project to improve flow and ease congestion on the vital economic corridor that runs from Crystal Lake to Lake in the Hills and Algonquin. Thanks to our work with U.S. Senator Tammy Duckworth and Representative Jan Schakowsky, as well as the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning and other partners, outside funding will cover eighty percent of the sixty-three point four million dollar price tag. As for the remaining twenty percent, your taxes will not go up. McHenry County has been saving for years to pay for this, and the money is in the bank. We don't rest on our laurels when it comes to securing federal and state funding. We're proactive and always looking for it. In fact, at our February eighteenth county board meeting, five days from when I officially deliver this address, U.S. Representative Bill Foster will be coming for a ceremony to hand us an eight hundred thousand dollar check to help cover the costs for the future relocation of the Metro Rail Yard on the Union Pacific Northwest Line from Crystal Lake to Woodstock, where more space and a new facility will result in a tremendous boost in service for the line that connects McHenry County with Chicago. I'm happy to report that at the end of January, the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity pledged three million dollars to help cover the cost of the ongoing work to extend utilities south from Marengo to the full interchange at Route twenty-three and I ninety. Once that work is done, we can look forward to the transformation of the interchange located between O'Hare and Rockford airports into a manufacturing and logistics hub that will mean even more quality jobs and economic growth. I would also like to thank State Senator Dave Severson and Representative Joe Sosnowski for drafting and passing legislation that will facilitate the placement of utilities. Marengo isn't the only municipality we're working to assist. We're supporting our municipal partners to secure funding for their own projects to help keep their taxes down, such as needed water system improvements in Wonder Lake and Cary. Collaboration with our state lawmakers when it comes to transportation is more vital than ever. Given the ongoing discussions in Springfield to reform the mass transit agencies that provide service to McHenry County and the Chicago region, we've been working with our local representatives and state senators, as well as our colleagues in the Coller Counties, to ensure that McHenry and the Coller Counties get the quality mass transit service that we deserve. I'd like to close our list of transportation accomplishments with yet another milestone we achieved in serving residents facing travel challenges. Four years ago, McHenry County, in partnership with Pace Suburban Bus, expanded its trailblazing MC Ride Dial-A-Ride service to cover the entire county, making it so much easier for people without reliable transportation to get where they need to go. In twenty twenty-four, we further bolstered this amazing service by introducing MC Ride Connect, an on-demand program that uses ride-sharing services like Uber. Through this service, county residents who have RTA Ride Free, Reduced Fair, or ADA Paratransit Cards can travel anywhere in the six-county Chicagoland region as long as their start or destination point is in McHenry County. One of my favorite parts of my annual address is talking about McHenry County's blossoming tourism and recreation sector. I think this is the best place to live, work, and play, and the more people who come here to see it for themselves, the better. Our tourism industry continues to thrive and grow, thanks in great part to an awesome partner in naturally McHenry County, the nonprofit organization that tirelessly works to promote us as a destination for visitors and conventions. In twenty twenty-three, McHenry County welcomed two point four million visitors, who generated more than thirty-four point two million dollars in economic impact, which created fifteen point four million dollars in local tax revenue and directly supported more than twenty-two hundred jobs. Naturally, McHenry County's staff works tirelessly to promote McHenry County as a destination of wonderful places and wide-open spaces that blends the best of both suburban and rural. Their latest endeavor, a series of specialty trails featuring our local businesses, have become a big hit. That's the Craft Beverage Trail that showcases our award-winning locally-made beer, wine, and spirits. The Coffee and Tea Trail, featuring locally-owned coffee and tea shops and The Coffee and Tea Trail, featuring locally-owned coffee and tea shops, and more recently, the Tacos, Tamale's, and Tortoise Trail featuring half a dozen of Harvard's best Mexican restaurants. Naturally, McHenry County constantly develops innovation and catchy ideas to draw tourism dollars here, and our tourism industry wouldn't be where it is now without them. And I'm excited to report that this April, Naturally McHenry County will be relocating to a new home in the old Courthouse Center in Woodstock. We can't think of a better home for Naturally McHenry County staff to work their magic right in the middle of the county on the historic and picturesque downtown square. Their impending move gives me another opportunity to talk about growing businesses and jobs. Naturally, McHenry County's old home in Huntley is going to be turned into a business incubator to give small and startup businesses a taste of what it's like to operate a brick-and-mortar location. Huntley will be joining the cities of McHenry and Woodstock, which have started incubators of their own. A number of participating businesses have since relocated to physical locations to continue writing their success stories. When businesses come to McHenry County or existing businesses decide to grow, government needs to make it easy for them and help them along, not get in the way with bureaucracy and red tape. The same especially goes for getting the needed permits to build and expand homes and businesses. County government has long realized this, and in 2025, will be taking even more steps to streamline the process. Our Planning and Development Department just went live with a new digital permitting system for permits, applications, and inspections. Property owners, contractors, architects, and engineers can now manage applications, communicate with the department, and schedule inspections whenever they need through an integrated online portal. Besides the portal, we're going to be installing kiosks at the county administration building where applicants, if they wish to do so, can upload or fill out applications. Making the entire process digital, from application intake to inspection and granting permits, will make the process smoother, easier, faster, and more efficient. The advent of artificial intelligence technology has the potential to reshape how work is done, just like how the internet revolutionized it 30 years ago. Like any new technology, AI presents opportunities, but challenges and pitfalls as well. Recognizing this, a working group made up of employees across multiple offices and departments crafted a policy regarding the use of AI in county government, which the county board approved in November. As county government begins using AI to improve workflow and interaction with the public, rest assured that it will be used transparently, appropriately, and ethically. I began my address by introducing the new county government officials who were elected in November. They were sworn in on December 2nd by Judge Michael Fiedler, who had just begun his term the previous day as the new chief judge of our 22nd Circuit Court. He has served for the past 20 years on the McHenry County bench with distinction and honor, and he currently presides over our specialty courts, our mental health court, adult drug court, DUI court, and a new assisted outpatient treatment program, which give nonviolent offenders a chance to clear their records by successfully completing court-supervised treatment programs. These courts have proven results, reducing recidivism while giving well-deserved second chances. And like everything else I've covered, it's done with collaboration and fiscal prudence. Just last month, the county board and I, along with Judge Fiedler and Court Administrator Dan Wallace, had the privilege of honoring Director of Special Projects Kelly Schmucka and Finance Coordinator Courtney Canope for securing more than $4 million in grants to keep these specialty courts going and saving lives without relying on local taxes. As long as I'm talking about groundbreaking initiatives, let's take a minute to talk about one of the 22nd Circuit's newest employees, the golden retriever on the leash in the photo. Her name is Honey, and she joined the staff in September as a facility dog for the Michael J. Sullivan Judicial Center. Honey will assist in alleviating stress and providing emotional support to members of the public, employees at the Judicial Center, and attorneys. Court is a very stressful and emotionally intense environment at times, and McHenry County joins a growing number of courts and judicial centers to introduce service dogs to foster a more supportive and comforting atmosphere. Honey's a welcome addition to our workforce, and more importantly, she's a good dog. In my State of the County address last year, I said that McHenry County had officially made its comeback from the COVID-19 pandemic and that it's now time to thrive. With 2024 now in the rearview mirror, I can unequivocally say that we're off to a great start, and we have even more to look forward to in 2025. Over the past decade or so, McHenry County, through solid planning and working with our state and federal partners, has turned many of its transportation dreams into reality, from widening Rackow Road to the Route 31 Algonquin Bypass, and the widening of Charles Miller Road Bridge over the Fox River, just to name a few. Starting this year, IDOT will begin another long-needed project, the rebuilding and widening of Route 47 through Woodstock. For so many years, we and the City of Woodstock petitioned the state to get this much-needed project going, and its time has come. The first phase, paid for by IDOT and the city, will widen and improve two miles of Route 47 between Route 14 and Route 120, improving traffic flow and adding pedestrian accommodations. We very much look forward to seeing this project progress. Earlier, I mentioned the impending start of work on the northern segment of the Randall Road Improvement Project. Construction will start this spring to widen and improve 1.3 miles of Randall Road between Alexandra Boulevard and Crystal Lake to Acorn Drive and Lake in the Hills. The multi-year project will add travel lanes, a sidewalk and shared-use path to link bike and pedestrian paths in surrounding neighborhoods, intersection improvements, and more. While spring will mark the start of these long-desired projects, it will also mark the accomplishment of another long-sought goal, the completion of our new memory care unit at Valley High Nursing and Rehabilitation. After years of planning and multiple feasibility studies concluding that there was a growing need for affordable and certified memory care in McHenry County, we broke ground in October 2023 on the new unit, and it's going to open this spring, a 21-bed, state-of-the-art facility that will complement, not compete with, private memory care facilities. And like the Randall Road project, we paid for the $4 million project entirely through existing fund balances. We did not raise taxes to do this. And finally, all of these accomplishments I've laid out in my address wouldn't have been possible without the guidance of the McHenry County Strategic Plan. The plan, which covers six categories vital to our never-ending mission to make McHenry County the best it can be, contains benchmarks to accomplish. If you'd like, you can read the plan and check out the report cards charting our progress by visiting the county website. We update the plan every four years, and as you can tell, we take it very seriously. This most recent plan is expiring, and the county board, with the invaluable input of our talented staff, will begin working hard to craft the next four-year plan. I'd like to end my address this year with an invitation to you to come work for us. Throughout this address, I've laid out the tremendous accomplishments we've made together and looked ahead as the best is yet to come. This was done by hundreds of passionate and dedicated people working hard and working together behind the scenes to make McHenry County an exceptional organization and community. If we sound like a team you'd like to join, we're always hiring. You can visit our job portal at mcHenrycountyil.gov/employment at any time to check out and apply for an open position. In closing, I will again say how I never stop being amazed by everything we've gotten done together, making sure our services are top-notch while being as efficient and economical as they can be. We're looking to do more, while always keeping costs down and seeking out every possible way to lower our tax burden to ensure that McHenry County remains the greatest place to live, work, visit, start a business, and raise a family. Thank you.
Move on to members' comments. Do any members have comments today? Ms. Greeno?
Thank you. What do you call a backroom deal that is railroaded through to be rubber-stamped by elected officials? It's called a bureaucracy, not a democracy. No offense, but we had three guys of a certain age, of fair skin, direct a public servant to write his own employment contract. Then the three approved it, and it was presented to elected officials with the instruction that no amendments were to be made. No discussion, no changes. Directives given, sometimes in executive session, sometimes in open session. And when an elected official asked for information to be presented to all the board members, she was denied. Yet when another board member asked for information, it was almost instantly given to him. To him, with no problem. Him. This is why there are feminists. I'm not a feminist. I don't need to be. I know my intrinsic worth. I know the worth of every person in this room, whether employee or elected official or taxpayer or constituent. Because all politics is local, and we see this type of behavior, this is why Illinois is a blue state. I cannot call this governance. It is politics at its worst. We are the last red-collar county in the Chicago metro area. We had a conservative sweep in November in McHenry County, and this is how elected officials are treated when it comes to the one position that we hire, evaluate, and negotiate for a four-year contract. There is no democratic process in place to direct this process or our role in hiring, evaluating, and negotiating the contract for the administrator of this county. This board as a whole has no idea the total dollar amount or the budgetary impact of this contract, not even a range. This has to be wiped away as a bad memory, a misstep, a mistake, as an opportunity to change going forward, starting today. I look forward to the engagement of a new process and how we can actually negotiate on behalf of the constituents of McHenry County a contract with our county administrator. We, as a board, are elected to represent the constituents, the taxpayers of McHenry County, and not three guys in a backroom. Thank you.
Mr. Kunkel?
I have a few, I guess we'll call them housekeeping items. Recently, we had a committee meeting that we did not have enough members show, and unfortunately, we were doing interviews for people who were, most of them giving of their time freely to us. I realize emergencies happen. I realize sickness happens, but whenever possible, we have got to give Kathy more notice that when we are not, and the chairs of the individual committees more notice when we can't make meetings, especially when the public is involved. They're who we are here for. Second item, the pandemic is over. Any county employees still working remotely due to that issue or other? I think it's incumbent upon this board to facilitate their return back to work here at the office, and if extraordinary circumstances are involved, they can be taken on a case-by-case basis. And lastly, we have a great ethics board. If you, or anything you see in this county and any of a county employs, is inappropriate in your mind, everybody knows the difference between politeness, chivalry, and inappropriate activity and inappropriate speech. Any kind of touching, any kind of activity of that nature, please bring it to our ethics board. This is open to past and to present county board members. I hate to even have to bring it up. We also currently have a bill HB 1314 in the works. Thank you, Alicia, for the information, which is going to broaden the depth and base of our ethics board. Thankfully, they've never been challenged, but if it needs to happen, we need to be very open and transparent and use our ethics board. That's what they're there for. Thank you.
Ms. Van Hoff?
Thank you, Chair. In recognition of Black History Month and in the spirit of working together, as the chair mentioned in his report, Member Althoff and I will be presenting an Underground Railroad presentation at the McHenry County Historical Society this coming Saturday at 11:00 a.m. So I want to tell you that Member Althoff and I did our first Underground Railroad lecture 32 years ago. I had to do the math this morning because I was thinking about that. We did a tour in 1993. It was the first Underground Railroad tour that was conducted in McHenry County, and we had five buses. We could only accommodate 250 individuals, and we sold out. We had to turn people away. This is fascinating history because, again, we talk about the spirit of working together all those years ago. So McHenry County has a proud history, and if you have not heard, Member Althoff and I present, you are in for a treat. I would like to invite you to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Althoff?
Might I just note that I was like 10 when that started?
Noted. I will proceed to public comment. Just a reminder, this is your opportunity to address the board, of which you'll have three minutes to address the board. If you exceed that three minutes, the red light comes on here, and I would ask you to conclude your comments in a timely fashion. First up would be Yvonne Daniels, followed by Russ Polno. And if you'd like to kind of stage off to the, your right, my left.
Good morning. My name's Yvonne Daniels. I live at 9305 Riley Road in Marengo, Illinois. I'm here this morning to speak on behalf of the Maple Valley Materials LLC, CUP. That would be 2023-05-1 and 05-1A. Since I'm not sure if I'm going to run out of time, I guess I will start with my statement from what I would consider an official capacity. I'm a trustee on the Riley Township Board and liaison to the Riley Township Planning Commission. The Planning Commission met on February 3rd and gave their recommendation on this CUP request to the Township Board. At the February 11 meeting of the Township Board, there was a unanimous vote for a recommendation that the expanded request for the Ready Mix Cup Batch Plant Number 2023-05-1A be denied. I'll not go into detail about the Serra District and the high permeability studies, as I believe the studies speak for themselves, and I know there are other hearers that will speak on this and take their time. I will, however, address the fact that this parcel is in the Coon Creek watershed via Riley Creek, because both Riley Creek and Coon Creeks run through my property. These creeks are home to fish, which include, among others, northern pike and bass, crawfish, and frogs, of which hawks, bald eagles, cranes, beavers, weasel, and muskrat, all of which I've had the pleasure of seeing, used as a food and water source. In addition to this, deer, fox, coyote, livestock, and domestic animals drink from this creek. Runoff from this property, along with any pollutants that are present, has a very real probability of entering these creeks. In the past, I've already had instances where an accidental opening of a valve from the Ozingo plant on Route 23 caused Riley Creek to rise to a flooding level with dark-brown water. Coon Creek is a watershed of the Kuschwaki River, which is a watershed of the Mississippi. So as you can see, this has a very widespread probability of additional contaminants and pollutants from yet another plant. Lastly, I'm a Realtor in Marengo, so I'd like to touch on the home value aspect. If you have two similar homes for sale for the same price, one near this property and one across town, which one do you think will sell first and ultimately for more money? The home near this property will stay on the market for longer, which in turn equates to a lower sale price. I made it. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Russ Polno, followed by Tony Kuriasis?
Good morning. I'm Russell Polno, 8703 Maple Street, Marengo. At the January 21 board meeting, my neighbors in the community addressed the conditions and why they filed petition. 2023-051 should be denied. Unfortunately, I was out of town, but I think I'm someone you need to know. I am the guy who has owned and lived in the house for more than 40 years that will be surrounded on three sides by this industrial land use. I'm what's referred to as the exception on the map. I am here today to request that you deny petition 2023-051 for Maple Valley Materials LLC for earth extraction and the concrete ready-mix plant because it does not meet approval standards required to obtain a conditional use permit. Mainly, standards number three, is the conditional use detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, mortals, comfort, or general welfare of the area? Number four, would the conditional use be injurious to the use and enjoyment? Number four, would the conditional use be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the area? And number five, will the conditional use substantially diminish and impair property value in the area? The answer to these questions is yes, not just for the residents in the immediate area, but for residents outside that area as well, but especially when it comes to my property. I don't think that anyone would think that a person that will be surrounded on three sides by a mining operation, who was there long before the petitioner applied for their first permit in 2003, that it would not be detrimental to the health and comfort and to the use and enjoyment, and that it would not diminish or impair my property value. These standards have not been met, so the permit must be denied. If this petition might be approved, I'm asking you to please include conditions pertaining to the berm heather on my property. 12 feet in height, setback at least 75 feet from my property lines, be planted with two rows of conifer trees, 10 feet in height when planted, as to the 2003 conditions, with the options to have the berms removed when I feel they are no longer needed. Also, the berms along Maple Street be planted with conifers, as to the 2003 conditions. Please reinstate the condition that was included in the 2003, but not in the 2014 conditional use permit, as to the home value guarantee for my property. No depreciation of value of property and a guarantee of property to appreciate to a percent equal to other homes in the surrounding area if there is a loss or no gain to property value because of the operations of Maple Valley Materials LLC. The petitioner should not be against adding this condition. Being as witness stated, my home value will not decrease, but I don't think many would agree. The loss of value would be devastating. And keep the condition as to a new well being installed on my property, as the petitioner has accepted and agreed to, and that I do appreciate. But again, I'm asking you to please deny this permit request. Thank you.
Tony Kuriasis, followed by Kathy Anderson.
Good morning. My name is Tony Kuriasis, and in 1957, the Chicago Cubs finished last place in the National League. But there was some good things that came out of Chicago that year that affects all of us here this morning. First, my parents decided to have a baby boy so that I could speak with you today. Secondly, there was a legal case between La Zalbank and Cook County, Illinois. The results of that case is what gives you, the board, the 10 standards by which you will judge the fate of our residential neighborhood on Maple Street. If the petitioner fails to meet one of those standards, yes, just one, according to Illinois and McHenry law, you must deny the petition. Let's look at standard five, which asks, will property values be substantially diminished? Let's talk only about Russ's home of 43 years, that little five-acre parcel surrounded on three sides by possible gravel mining and a concrete plant. As a full-time real estate professional for 32 years, I'm telling you that Russ's property will be devastated. I've discussed this with 40 professional real estate agents, and they have filled out a poll, and they bear witness here today that Russ's property would absolutely be substantially diminished. After viewing the map, they were asked how gravel mine would affect Russ's property value, and to choose either A, no effect, B, substantially diminished, or C, I'm sorry, somewhat diminished, or C, substantially diminished. I'll email you this, so it is a matter of record. And by the way, if Russ's home is going to be diminished, so will the ones directly across the street. This was a question the petitioner, his attorney, and the geologist had the hardest time with, as they stuttered and stammered through their answers while looking at the floor. They had no experts to back up their opinions. Geologists and miners should really stay in their own lanes. The one standard by itself is enough for you to deny this petition. Someone needs to protect Russ and the rest of us. I don't know how you could vote in favor of gravel mining when it clearly violates Illinois and McHenry County law regarding standard five. We agree with the 2003 ZBA members that gravel mining would violate at least five of the standards, but I'm only going to ask you to address just one question. Use your mind, use your heart, use your common sense, and above all, use the law. If the answer to this question in your mind is yes, according to Illinois and McHenry County law, you must vote against both. Please be honest with yourself. Do you think that Russ's property value will be substantially diminished? You alone know what you heard in your mind. If you heard yes to that question, you must vote against both gravel and concrete, because they fail to meet standard five. Thank you.
Kathy Anderson, followed by Carmine Tucci.
On the same subject, did you want my name and address? Kathleen Anderson? No, okay, you don't worry. This is in reference to the approval of standards for conditional use permits. Number three, that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use shall not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare of the neighboring vicinity. And I'm going to go on safety. Maple Street is parallel and one mile east of Route 23, which is populated with heavy industry, Ozinga cement, consolidated materials with mining gravel and crushed concrete, prairie material aggregate, mining sand, crushed stone, and Peter Baker asphalt. All of these put out heavy trucks with heavy loads coming down Coral and Harmony Roads. Because many of these drivers are paid by the load, they are speeding and aggressive. How aggressive? I was driving west on Harmony Road in the afternoon, and in my mirror, I saw a truck fast approaching and on my bumper in seconds. We were going the speed limit. He was so close, I thought he was going to push me. All I saw in my mirror was M A C K in big letters. I was frightened. With my right turn coming up, I put my signal on well ahead, hoping that he would back off, but he did not. He just jerked that truck into the oncoming lane and proceeded. The truck was empty, or he would have flipped over the cornfield. He was probably going back to get another load because, before the end of the day. And this was not the only time that happened. It happened more than once. On these same roads, along with these trucks, we have slow-moving farm equipment and school buses, people coming out of their driveways. And safety again here. In the last five years, the intersection at Maple and Coral has seven crashes with injuries requiring trips to the hospital and one fatality. The Department of Transportation is working on ways to make this intersection safer, which could eventually include a roundabout. These trucks are not going to slow down for a roundabout. They will just move over to Harmony Road and double the traffic there. One afternoon during construction season, I counted 16 trucks in 30 minutes in front of my house. 16 trucks in 30 minutes. We do not want more trucks. Again, referring to the approval standard number four, that the conditional use shall not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity
You could summarize your comments, please.
Pardon me?
You've reached your three minutes, if you could summarize your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Carmine Tucci, followed by, I apologize for the handwriting. Teresa Link, is it?
Good morning. My name is Carmen Tucci. I live at 20419 Delks Drive. I am two houses from Maple Street. I'm here to speak on the Maple Valley Cup. I have probably spoken to a little more than half of the board members, and I would like to start out first by saying how much I appreciate the attention we've been given. I can tell that every member is engaged. There are a lot of issues with regard to this position, and your careful consideration is greatly appreciated. One thing I noticed in my conversations with everyone was that, at the time of our conversations, the members weren't all aware of how close our homes are to the proposed main entrance on Maple Street, and that Maple Street is our only option to get to many of our homes. We don't have another access road. It's our artery to everything we do in our daily lives. The entrance to the proposed yard is on Maple Street, a street that has 15 driveways directly in front or very shortly to the sides of the yard entrance, a proposed batch plant running 60 cement trucks, a gravel yard with countless semi-trucks, not to mention all of the incoming delivery semis, which will bring in loads of materials to make concrete. Many additional materials have to come in to make concrete that you cannot get out of the ground, Portland cement, chemical additives, and specialty aggregates, just to name a few, 100 trucks per day tearing up three county roads, Maple, Harmony, and Coral before they can get to a state road. There are approximately 50 homes or empty lots that have been purchased this past two years that have Maple Street as their front yard and back side yards. Many of us on Maple Street have all three sides of our homes and our direct views. We use Maple Street not only to access our homes, but to take short walks with children and our pets. It is also used by many bike riders, school bus, mailmen, and women. Police, fire, and paramedic services will be impacted as well by this volume of heavy truck traffic. One second's count. Many yards and driveways that children play in are adjacent to Maple Street, winter runners daily, and lots of use in the summer months. Maple is a small street. It has become more residentially cheer and goes by with all but one purchased, I got a little confused here, but all the lots are purchased, and there are many more homes to come on a residential street, which is Maple. I believe these facts directly violate standard number three, the standard which guarantees our safety and comfort on Maple Street. We would clearly not be safe or comfortable with 100 cement and gravel trucks using our only residential access to our homes. Thank you.
Ms. Link, followed by Teresa Kuriasos.
Good morning. Judy Link, 5840 Highland Lane, Lakewood. Up until two and a half years ago, my husband and I lived about three miles from the proposed site of petition 2023-051. We built our dream home on five acres and lived there for 30 years. If it weren't for health reasons, we would still be there. We miss it every day. When I learned about this, I felt I had to do something for a community that still means so much to me. So today, I'm speaking on behalf of the environment and the role that gravel plays in protecting our water quality. Gravel plays a crucial role in the filtration of water into aquifers. Here are some key points. Gravel acts as a pre-filter, trapping large particles and preventing them from entering the aquifer. This helps to reduce the load on finer filtration medium downstream. Gravel provides structural support to the filter bed, preventing the finer filtration media from being washed out during backwashing. This ensures the longevity and effectiveness of the filtration system. Gravel helps distribute water evenly across the filtration system. This improves the overall efficiency of the filtration process. In some cases, gravel layers can enhance bio-geochemical processes such as dentification, which can help remove contaminants like nitrates from the water before it enters the aquifer. And most importantly, gravel layers can also act as a protective layer for aquifers, reducing the risk of contamination from surface pollutants. Some estimate by the year 2030, our neighbors to the east will no longer have adequate water supplies and will most likely depend on the prolific aquifers in southwest McHenry County. This board recognizes the importance of our water and has supported many initiatives, such as the Water Resource Department, Water Resource Action Plan, and other programs in a proactive attempt to plan for this scenario. Yes, mining gravel is important economically, but it isn't just as valuable as the natural resource to ensure our water quality. Maybe we need to start thinking more about not mining all our gravel, especially when it's located in a sensitive aquifer recharge area. Wouldn't it be great if the county and the state of Illinois, McHenry County Conservation District, and local municipalities could work together and purchase SARA's to guarantee their sustainability for generations to come? What a great use of tax dollars that would be. I urge you to vote no on petition 2023-051. Thank you.
Teresa Kuriasos, followed by Cindy Rafkind.
Hi, everyone. I'm Teresa. I spoke to a lot of you on the phone. A couple of you I've sent emails to and left messages with. I too want to say thank you. It means a lot that you are actually taking this very serious for us. I know that you're spending time on it. I know that there's been a lot of questions with approval standards and conditions on our side and hearing the differences. I've learned a lot in just a few months that I never thought I would have to know. I just want, I don't have anything planned. I just wanted to come up here and let you know that, yes, Russ's property will be substantially impacted by this. He's called the exception property because when they do, from what I understand, when they filed for insurance or the value of the land of the petitioner, it's everything except that property. So it doesn't mean that he's the exception and he can basically be, well, raped. His property can. I'm literally across the street and one door down, which, we purchased this home recently. We moved from Chicago to McHenry County. We sought McHenry County to be the place to live out our livelihood and raise our son, who was here once and spoke. I'm a proud mom. But it's devastating. It's hard to understand. My concern is, if this gets approved, what's going to happen next to the other farm fields to the north and to the south? Is that suddenly going to be approved as well? There's gravel. I understand everybody needs the gravel, the sand, all that. But there comes a point where you have to say, it's there, yes, but do you really need to take it from there? There's other spots. If the north and south start getting it too, the whole strip of Maple Street could turn into what a ZBA member in 2003 said, that it could be a gravel ghetto. I certainly don't want this to happen in anyone's area, specifically down Maple Street. And I just hope that you guys will take a serious look at it and the standards, because we believe, just like the ZBA board members in the past, that 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, and 9 are being violated. Thanks for your time.
Jackie Mitzfeld, followed by Kathy Baumann. Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. Cindy Rafkind, I apologize.
Good morning. I'm Cindy Rafkind. I'm a concerned resident, taxpayer, and constituent of McHenry County. I'm also a nurse practitioner, and like many of you, I care deeply about health and safety. I don't live near Maple Street, but I am here to lend my support to the people here who are against putting a mining and ready-mix plant next to homes, because I know how they feel. In 2023, there was an effort to put a mega logistics facility next to my neighborhood in the southern part of the county. Me and my neighbors organized, just like these folks, to preserve our quality of life, the safety of our air and our well water. Unfortunately, that deciding body sided with the petitioner, who happens to be the largest landowner and developer in the state and who does not live anywhere near the property, leaving those of us who do live there holding the bag. Please don't do that to these people who have to live there. I do also live half a mile from the existing ready-mix plant at Route 20 and I-90. And I can tell you, it is loud, the squeaking of the conveyor belts. You can hear it all day, all night, when it's running. And crushing rock, it's not a subtle operation. It's very loud. These folks are going to hear that all the time. And it can't really be improved by a berm or a screen of trees. I urge you to vote no on the Maple Valley petition to help keep McHenry County a great place to live and to protect the health of our residents. Thank you so much for your time.
Jackie Mitzfeld, followed by Kathy Baumann.
My name is Jackie Mitzelfeld. I live at 20718 West Coral Road in Marengo. I'm here today to ask you to deny the permit for the proposed ready-mix batch plant. Our community does not need more truck traffic. My children get on and off the bus daily. These semis will pass the bus in front of my house as it's slowing down to pick up and drop off my children just before the bus puts its stop arm out. This happens several times a week. I have reached out to the Sheriff's Department several times, offering my property for them to sit and watch these semis pass the buses, blow through the stop sign at Maple and Coral, and exceed the speed limit. I have received no response. The applicant has yet to comply with the stipulations put in place 20 years ago by building the berm. In my opinion, this is a clear view that the petitioner does not believe that the rules apply to them and will likely not follow through with any of the requirements. Furthermore, we have had reliable resources inform us that the petitioner has a buyer for this property as soon as the permit is approved. While this batch plant is being advertised to you as a small family plant is being advertised to you as a small family business, the potential buyer is the largest ready-mix producer in northern Illinois. As the wife of a 150 operator and the niece of a local concrete finisher, I'm here to tell you that no amount of filtering will completely eliminate the silicate dust and high potential for contamination to our wells as the McHenry County Water and Soil Conservation Report clearly states. Who's going to pay to have our wells cleaned or have new wells put in when our wells are contaminated? Please deny this permit for our community, our children, and our families.
Kathy Baumann, followed by Patricia Kennedy.
Good morning. I'd like to present our petitions to the clerk with 996 signatures, just shy of 1,000, in opposition of this request. As we mentioned before, the proposed land use not only impacts the local community, but the damage it will have on the serra will impact many others throughout the county as well. With that said, it's time for Let's Imagine. Imagine yourself in your backyard, enjoying a beautiful stress-free day as you ponder these questions. Do the sounds from a cement batch plant six days a week for 12 hours a day, Monday through Friday, as well as Saturdays, make you feel relaxed? Does building an industrial type of facility on a property that is located on over 96 acres of a sensitive aquifer recharge area sound like a good idea? Is a 111-acre cement batch plant compatible with surrounding farmland and over 180 homes within the square mile? Do you welcome the bright glare from industrial lighting against your star-filled night sky? Would you be happy about the traffic noise generated by commercial vehicles transporting the raw materials off-site, as well as the increased traffic and the safety risk of children and the elderly, all while wearing out the roads you use to commute? Do you prefer the injurious noise level of cement trucks being loaded and washed while reading your favorite book or simply sitting in your yard? Would you appreciate not being able to open your windows on an ice spring day due to the westerly winds blowing the dust created on the site? Would you want an earth extraction operation and ready-mix plant as your neighbor? You need to vote no on this petition if you answered no to any of these questions. Thank you for your time and attention. We do appreciate it. Who can I hand the petitions to?
Patricia Kennedy, followed by Mark Saladin.
I knew I needed to bring my little step. I'm Patricia Kennedy, 20712 Strite Road, rural Harvard. I'm speaking today as a representative of Dunham Township. A different petition on this one. The petition we're talking about here is 2024-021. It's a request for rezoning from an A1 to a B1. And let me say right here that the business that is looking for this seems to be doing good work. And I speak with, or hear through the grapevine, that the quality of work they do is good. But what they're asking for here just flies in the face of the county's land use plan map and the township's plan use map as well. The whole area here is surrounded, the B1 part of the parcel they would like for B1 is surrounded by A1 and is actually being farmed. The whole area is A1. And in simple parlance of planning, this would be an entering wedge. It's out in the countryside, and they want to have a business zoning, a B1. And the thing is that if they were to receive the B1 for this one parcel, it's not just that business that could be there. There's 60 different uses that would be allowed on the property. And they range from everything from auto dealerships to auto repair, to the sale of alcoholic beverages, mixed-use dwelling units, to gas stations, to power production, to warehouses, and it goes on for a long way. So if this gets B1, any one of these things would be allowed there. They wouldn't have to come in for any other zoning. They would already be allowed. And so you would have an area that both the county and the township believes should be maintained as agriculture because it's great soil, great place to grow things, that it would have this business plunked down in the middle of it. And it's, like I say, this is called an entering wedge. And we, the township, voted unanimously to oppose it. And I know that the neighbors there have, I think it's like 40 or 60-some signatures on their petition. As I say, also, all the surrounding property of this parcel is currently being farmed. And we strongly request that you vote no on petition 024-021. Thank you. And have a step for us tall or short people here. Thank you.
Mark Saladin, followed by Tyler Wilkey.
Good morning. My name is Mark Saladin. I am the attorney for the petitioner on the Maple Valley site. I do appreciate your time this morning. And we do appreciate the neighbors' concerns. And we'll go through some of the reasons we feel that this is a valid petition that has met those standards. Let's first talk about, and there are two separate petitions, one for the renewal and one for the batch plant, concrete batch plant. The economic downturn has caused the property not to be mined at this point, but it has been zoned that way for 20 years. Any neighbor who wanted to call the county about the zoning would be able to find out from staff that this was zoned, conditional use, with earth extraction. So even though berms weren't put up because they didn't get their mining permit because they haven't mined yet, berms will go up as soon as they begin the mining and have the permit and the reclamation plan in place with the IDNR. The economic downturn hurt us from the recession of '06, '07, '08. I was a city council member in Woodstock for eight and a half years during that time. There was no housing permits. There was no road improvement permits going on. As we started to emerge from that, COVID hit. So there are economic reasons. And it not only affects our petitioner here, but it affects other petitioners that I have other plans where they've got 20-year annexation agreements and they haven't started mining because of those same reasons. Why request a concrete batch plant at the same site? Gavers, who runs Maple Valley, is a small company. They are going to consolidate their operation at this site. The concrete plant will be an electric plant, not diesel, not gas. It'll help with the truck traffic because of the nature of not having to come onto a site, leave the site for a different plant, come back for more materials, and keep going back and forth. We had a traffic study done. We had a noise study done. McDOT reviewed this. And in fact, over 10 years ago, McDOT required us to provide a dedicated property, 1.4 acres, and an entrance. So we already relied on this conditional use permit, even though we have not started mining. 10 years ago, Dave Stone, who was an attorney in the county, worked for the, was an assistant state's attorney, was a longtime member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. 10 years ago, when he commented on this petition as a member of the ZBA, specifically said that those things that the petitioner has done in reliance on this conditional use permit would be legally indefensible in court if the renewal is not granted because of those types of things that have already been done. To address the neighbors' concerns, Tyler Wilkey will be talking about some of the conditions that are being required by our petitioner. You have to remember that this industry is heavily regulated. It is regulated by the McHenry County. It's regulated by the stormwater permit process. It's regulated by the Illinois EPA with air quality standards and water quality standards. It's regulated by the IDNR for permitting.
Summarize your comments, please.
The expert testimony with the traffic study, with the noise study, the in-depth discussion with respect to dust control, road improvements, a well for the property owner next door, all lead to a conclusion that we have met the burden for the conditional use requirements that would request your approval. Thank you.
Tyler Wilkey.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. I am also an attorney for the petitioner. We believe the petitioner has provided the evidence to prove that they have met their burden to satisfy the standards for both conditional uses. However, even at that, the county has put forth additional conditions that must be adhered to. And these conditions are to do what the common law has done since the founding of this great nation, allow each person to enjoy his and use their property up and until it infringes upon the rights of others. A more modern translation is that each person is neighborly. As such, when granted these two independent conditional uses, Maple Valley Materials must provide for a landscape barrier not less than eight feet to provide the neighbors with a line of sight and noise barrier, and that's in accordance with the landscape plan as provided. They must maintain and monitor groundwater purity alongside the regulating authority, including McHenry County, to protect the aquifer. They will ensure that 1,000 feet of the adjacent roadway is kept in good repair as a result of its operation. They must maintain hours of operation, Monday through Friday, 7 to 7, Saturday 7 to 3, no work on Sunday. They must maintain a dust-free condition along with the regulatory agencies of EPA, OSHA, and EMTSA, the regulations on noise, air, and water standards at the petitioner's cost. They must ensure that the roadways are not contaminated with debris leaving the operation. And annually, they have to receive an annual operations permit. That requires an operation plan, a reclamation plan, groundwater protection plan, surety, regulatory permits from IDNR, EPA, OSHA, and EMTSA, surety, stormwater management plan, dust control plan, spill control plan, annually. With all these additional conditions in place to monitor and control the petitioner, in order to ensure that the neighbors are protected, the county board can with confidence vote to approve the petitioner's ability to the enjoyment of his property and also be the benefactors of the property and sales tax generation, relieving the burden from the McHenry County homeowners. Considering the conditions and securities included, we look forward to your approval of the conditional uses requested by Maple Valley Materials to allow for McHenry County to effectively and economically rely on its own resources in building and expanding its future growth. And as Chairman Bueller stated in his State of the County address this morning, the 90 interchange near the project is poised for growth, and the resources to be used in that growth can be less than three miles away with your vote. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment today. No reports or presentations. Moving on to new business, do any members have items from next Tuesday's agenda they'd like to remove for discussion? Ms. Greenow? Mr. Smith?
From the zoning regular agenda, 10B1, 10B2, and 10B3, please.
Mr. Kearns?
From the consent agenda, 16B211, 16B32.
Hold on a second. 16B21?
111.
11.
And that was the adjustment to the general fund. 16B32, the legislative program.
Any others? That's all you have, Mr. Kearns?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Smith, 10B1, 2, and 3.
Okay, 10B1. That's the rezoning that we had a public comment on earlier in Dunham Township. So that was voted 7-0 by the Zoning Board of Appeals to deny that petitioner's request. But when it comes to us, it's going to be written in the affirmative. So if you want to agree with the zoning board's vote to deny that request, we'll be voting a no next Tuesday night on that one. I have to be out of town, but I have asked vice chair of the PED, Carolyn Campbell, to remind us of that again. Or if anybody has any questions, they can call me before Saturday, and I can help them with that. We do have a formal letter of objection from the Dunham Township in our packet on that. And that would be all I have on that one.
Thank you. 16B29. I know that there's been robust discussion about this at Administrative Services and Finance as well. Oh, I thought you were taking them all at the same time, Larry. Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. The 10B1 was a different one and different situation. 10B2 and 10B3 I can take together. I've had a lot of questions. I've read the testimony, watched most of the meetings, to do my best to answer the questions from the other board members that have called me about it. I may have been a little more vague than they would have liked, but I did not feel it was my position to encourage them to vote one way or the other. And I'm not speaking today to do that either. I just want to encourage the members to read the testimony, listen to the meetings if you can. It's time-consuming. I get that. And educate yourself the best you can regarding this petition. So when you vote, you can feel like you've done your job, and you vote how you feel that it should be done. Thank
Mr. Kearns?
Agreeing with Mr. Smith. These petitions, I believe our members take the time and read through them. They're very lengthy. Going to take you a lot of time. I have a couple questions on the B2 on the gravel side, as I read through it. And if there's anything we could do on the berm height difference, I know they raised it to an eight-foot berm. If it could be even higher if this goes through around, especially around that residence that's on that parcel. You know, if we could do anything to help buffer that even further in distance, that would be great. I know before the meeting, it was asked, do they cover the road in front of it? Mr. Wilkey had addressed that as 1,000 feet, 500 feet each direction. In reading the petition, it was stated that the traffic would be to the north, going toward Coral and not toward Harmony. If I read that correctly, it was late when I got to that. I was a little blurry-eyed. But it stated that it would be going toward Coral, the traffic. If that's the case, and the amount of trucks, gravel, and if both of them pass the batch, the cement, could it not be a left turn out, right turn in only for this pit to keep the traffic off the rest of that road going to Harmony? Because that is a road that we're going to have, as the county, we're going to have to pay for it to rebuild that road. And that's just something I would like to ask if we could give any consideration to that. As for the batch plant, I've told the petitioner, when they talked to me about it, that I would not vote for this batch plant. I did not say which way I go on the gravel, but I will not vote for the batch plant. I'll just come up and sell them so they know, if they're county votes, they know where I stand. So I just don't think it's a fit on that road. So, thank you.
Mr. Scala?
So my daughter accuses me of not reading books. I politely informed her that I read for the last couple of days a 401-page book, which was this petition. It even had pictures in it too, so I could say it was a picture book. So I'm going to address the batch plant first. Part of my issue with what we have before us is that the 30 conditions that are in here are exactly the same for both. And I understand that originally this was all in one petition, right? And then the ZBA chose to split it, so now it's divided into two. But the 30 conditions are the same for both situations. But the 30 conditions are the same for both situations. So when I look at the standards, you know, I look at the concrete batch plant, and I think, okay, have, has the petitioner, reading through the testimony, met those standards? And in my opinion, standards 3, 4, and 5 have not been met. And so when I look at, to me, my responsibility is looking at the conditions, is there something that I can change in the conditions by which that would meet those standards? And on the batch plant, I, I can't figure out a way to change the standards or change the conditions so that they would meet those standards. So for that reason, I am a no vote on the batch plant. When it comes to the earth extraction, on the initial look at it, again, the petitioner, I feel did not meet 2, 3, 4, and 5. I think by changing the conditions, I think they could meet 2, 3, and 4. And so if the board was so inclined, I would make a motion on Tuesday night, and I would give you a red-line copy of the conditions to have those changed. On the earth extraction, number 5, I, there was no testimony by the petitioner that would convince me that number 5 was met. You know, I agree with some of the wording in the very first petition that came before the county board about making sure that residents' property values were made whole. And perhaps that's language that could be added to the conditions through appraisals, and therefore, that would then meet that petition, or that condition. And if that's so desired, then I think we could add that condition in there so that number 5 could be met. When I look at some of the conditions that I would be recommending for changes, 6A has a measurement of 30 feet in it, and I would be recommending 100 feet. 7 talks about the berms, and they are recommended at 8 feet, and I would be recommending 12. I'm going back to, in that particular case, and I'm, when I'm using page numbers, I'm using page in our board packet here, so just for reference for people. But their own, their own expert talked about why it was moved from 6 to 8, and how that change from 6 to 8 reduced noise. And so doing some extrapolation, I think 12 feet would be better. When you look at the hours of operation, I am okay with the 7:00 AM, the 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, but on Saturday, I would change those hours from 8 into 12, and then no hours on Sunday. I also have a problem with, in that same section, which is 9, the, I would like to remove the emergency section. So if you don't know what that was, there's a whole section that talks about emergency work that could happen outside of those hours. To me, that's a recipe for disaster, because what constitutes emergency, even though the condition kind of outlines it a little bit, to me, that's open to interpretation and could cause potential problems. On page 27, there was talk about the well that they will be drilling in order to supply their 2,500 to 3,000 gallons a day that they will be needing to do that operation. I wasn't able to decipher exactly if that was for both operations, meaning both the concrete batch plant and the earth extraction, and perhaps staff could provide a little more clarity on that, whether that number was for both or just for one of them?
For you.
And then I guess my other subsequent question is, is that regulated at all? If they're saying they're only going to use up to 3,000 gallons a day, do we monitor that through, you know, some type of meter so that we can make sure that they're being held accountable for that?
That's, we'll find that answer out in conjunction with the other part. We don't, PND does not regulate it. There may be some overlap with other permit regulations, IDNR, IPA.
Okay. The other thing that was talked about was in the petition about the aquifer by which they would be drawing that water from. And there was, there was testimony that talked about the fact that their well would be deeper than any of the wells that the surrounding areas would be drawing their water from. And what I saw through, there was, I don't know, seven, eight pages worth of well data there, that the deepest well closest to them was over 1,000 feet deep. So, again, don't know what we, as a county, can control about how deep their well is to make sure that neighbors' wells aren't impacted. Again, is that a condition we have to put on, that their well has to be a minimum of X amount of feet?
I think you could.
You could. We would probably have a little bit more of a discussion so that we can give good advice toward, to the board. We would have a little more discussion with the Department of Health to really confirm what other impacts that may have, intended or unintended.
Page 349, this was talking about the, the bond that would be set up. It was, so it talks about, 349 was the cost associated with, with the final closeout of the space, and how we, as a county, would be reviewing that every year for, I'll say, theoretical cost differentials. My concern is that we're using that initial 150% of the cost based on the own, the petitioner's estimate of the cost, which, nothing personal about the petitioner, but to me, that's kind of ass backwards. I mean, why are we using their numbers to set the bond? Because how do I know that their numbers are true or factual? And so, again, not that it's not true, but we've had situations here at the county board where we've been screwed on that whole situation. And, and, and I don't feel like going backwards, I feel like moving forward. So I do have an issue with that, because even though it gets reviewed slash looked at every single year, and the petitioner would theoretically have to change their bond amount based on that new information, it's still based on what they're providing to us. I have an issue with that. And then on page 358, it's talking about the noise. And I, I found the testimony to be somewhat humorous, because the petitioner's own expert never really gave answers clearly to the questions that were being asked. And I don't think they ever really answered the noise issues. Besides the fact that they commented that increasing the berm height would alleviate some of that noise, or prevent some of that noise, ambient noise, from coming over to the residents, they never really answered the question about, well, if, because there was a question that was posed about, well, if one item is creating 76 decibels and another item implement is, you know, I think it was 80 decibels, you know, does that mean that the overall noise is going to be higher because you have two things? And, and the expert talked about, well, if one's 50 and one's 100, well, that wasn't what the question that was asked. And so it was, again, when you go back to the standards, did they meet those standards? And their own expert, in my opinion, didn't do them any help in trying to meet those Last, I do have an issue, and I spoke to Mr. Saladin about this, I do have an issue with the fact that this has been granted for 20 years and nothing's been done. I, I understand the economic conditions of which the country has been going through for the last 20 years, but for the petitioner to state that the economic conditions were not good enough for them to start taking gravel out, I think we've all seen all of the other gravel entities that we have approved here in this county moving gravel, a lot of gravel. And there has been, you know, the state of Illinois passed a whole infrastructure bill of moving things along in our state, and, and, and our county. I mean, we've had construction projects in our county that have used gravel. So I find that to be a little disingenuous, and as far as the reasons why. Perhaps the petitioner themselves financially have not found it viable, but that doesn't mean that gravel extraction as a whole across the county has not had it being viable. Again, it has nothing to do with the actual 10 conditional use standards, but it just, it, I find it a little disingenuous. The, the last comment that I have is pertaining to the berm. It talked about the berms should be, should be planted and in place if they're going to be there for longer than a year. Well, to me, if you are moving the topsoil in order to start mining the gravel, you know, why would we wait a whole year for that berm to be there in order to start doing the planting on it? Especially when you look at the berms that are on the west, which is where all these residents are. To me, that should be a berm that's put up first and planted first, so that all the other noise of taking the topsoil off would be, would be cut down. So again, that would be a condition that I would be changing as far as the petition goes. That's all my comments. Thank you.
Ms. Greenow?
Thank you, thank you. My overall thoughts would be the convenience of having the batch plant at the same facility as the mining, because it would lower traffic and decrease the impact all around. When I look at why a person makes a business decision about when to open up operations on other property, I realize that we don't have insight into that. We don't know what was going on with their other operations. Perhaps they weren't coming to a point of being mined out. So those are things that, that I really can't, you know, we have private property rights, we have free market capitalism. But one of the things that I'm not clear on is that we have at least two county roads that are going to be impacted with traffic. I don't know what the infrastructure of the county road is, and I don't know who covers the cost of making sure that the county roads can handle that traffic. Is that covered by the petitioner, or do we just have funds available to make these changes? I don't know.
Yeah, so we'll have conditions on there that would, whether it's going to be an extension of traffic flow, but the bonding would be one piece where, they wouldn't have bonding for it. Jump in on this one. I'll bite your ear.
So there will be a road use agreement, there's always a road use agreement with these things. And then the typical ask is that they maintain the road within a certain distance of the entrance to their facility. And I don't think that there's anything additional. Maybe Scott has more to add? Or Joe, sorry.
Usually when an application comes in like this, it's not like money is set aside for what improvements were done. That has to be analysis that is done, determine the impact on the pavement by the additional loading, and then talked about what type of improvements may be needed. That is what was done on Virginia Road for the waste management site.
And that's a part of this? I mean, it's already been done?
Yes.
Okay. Is that in the 400 pages?
No.
It's not?
That study has not been done yet, is part of what you're considering.
That will be done at the time of permitting, when they build the access and start the operation.
Okay, and then, and then they would have a bond for whatever our estimated impact is, if I'm understanding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Right, I would add, the only other piece I would add to that is, a lot of that discussion occurred during the Site Plan Review Committee meeting, when McGod joins that and kind of lays out what the next steps would be. Feasibility is reviewed for sure, and then the next part of that is going to be long-term plan. So that, you know, as they get closer to the implementation and that permitting becomes the next step, that's when those, those steps will be taken.
Thanks, Chairman. First off, I want to say thank you to all of the individuals who are here to speak from the public. I appreciate the professional approach and the kind of reveal that you have established from last month's meetings to this month's meeting. I also, if I had been attorneys, now I know that they're paid huge amounts of money, but if I had been Mark and Tyler as attorneys, I wouldn't have wanted to follow and stand up there in front of everybody and kind of be the target. So I appreciate everybody's restraint and professionalism as we went through today's session. So I just say that off the top. I do appreciate the comments of my colleagues here. There's a lot of things that I agree with wholeheartedly. The berm height and plantings, I absolutely believe need to be enhanced. I also appreciate the context of the hours of operation, and I think that's important to reevaluate, and I'm in favor of reducing those hours of operations. I'm also equally concerned about road surfacing and road repairs as necessary has been raised. Also, I'm concerned about the traffic pattern, if you will. Is there going to be requirements for directional usage more specifically outlined, et cetera? So those are some kind of things that I think about. But I also, on the other hand, think about the context, as all of our realtors are very much aware, and that is the highest and best use of land. And in some instances, we know that the highest and best use is going to be residential development, and others it might be industrial development, and others it might be agriculture or, or even extraction of minerals. And I think that we here in McHenry County have the largest number of gravel pits of any county in the state of Illinois. There are reason for that, and that is the glacial till that we have as a result of thousands of years of stone being deposited from the glaciers. And so that is a resource, and I think property owners have a right to utilize their property for the highest and best use. Now, of course, it must be within the guidelines of proper zoning and proper regulation, and so I fully support that. That's why I think the questions that have been raised with regards to some of these issues are important for us, us to consider. One thing I don't think has been addressed, and I would like to know more about this, and I have no right to ask this, so I apologize upfront, but I think that it's, it's being questioned, and I think people are concerned about this, and I share this concern. I have a great deal of respect for the petitioners themselves, and the company, and the contributions, the community mindedness and spirit that they have for McHenry County as a whole. So I appreciate that wholeheartedly. The question has been raised, once the approval process is considered, and if there are approvals made, then is this going to be immediately transfer of ownership to an out-of-state corporation who doesn't have the same connections with this community, the same dedication to this community? That's something that does, does concern me, and I know that it concerns the residents, and I would like a greater kind of explanation. In page four of the ZBA, it says that one of the members asked if all conditions would be transferred to new owners, the property sold. That was responded to in the affirmative, but it's still, that underlying question, is it going to be sold and out of the hands of a local business? And so don't have the right to ask that really, because we are all free to sell our assets. This is the United States. This is the United States, but it is a concern. The other thing that I will say, and I think it's the best that we have, but the standards that we have, whether we like it or we don't like it, are still somewhat subjective. They are not totally objective. They are not totally black and white. There is some gray in there, and I, I think that therefore we have to use our best judgment, if you will, in understanding what we believe is the right thing to do, realizing that many of these standards are, are subjective by their very nature because they expect to have review and consideration. And so I offer that to my colleagues today, but I do appreciate certainly the interest of the developer in investing in the McHenry County on both of the petitions. I understand the efficiencies of the batch plant being incorporated. I think that that's appropriate for many, many different efforts in the long term. But I also appreciate the concerns of, of local residents who have to live with this on a day-to-day basis, and we have responsibility to protect their quality of rights as well. So I thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Gottermiller.
Yes, besides everything that's been said today, I would just want to point out that we, I have this split into two petitions so that when it comes up on Tuesday night, you're going to have two votes to take. The first one, and in the order they're on on our agenda, the first one involves the earth's extraction. The second is involving the batch plant. They are actually two separate petitions as they come before us. So that's not saying, you know, which way I'm voting or what we're doing or telling you to vote only there. I just want to remind you that you will have two opportunities to weigh in on this. And I too also would want to commend all the people that spoke here today. We have been in this, in front of this board for, in some of us, more years than we care to mention, but this was a very well-done presentation for both sides, and I do appreciate the fact that we focused on the issues, not on the personalities. Thank you.
Mr. Kaminski.
Adam, with my fellow board members making great suggestions and recommendations, we have the permit, it's going to come to us, we're going to vote on. How do these suggestions, recommendations get in there? And we could see that they're going to be a part of it when it, it's done, and we have to vote on what we have in front of us? How do those get incorporated?
At, I mean, really at the time of the vote, it, it would be much of
Motion to amend.
Motion to amend and to include those conditions.
Okay, seeing no further discussion on those items, 16B to nine. As I was saying before, I know there's been very robust discussion in admin services and finance as well. And I think that any claim to the process that has not been democratic is inaccurate and misleading. This contract has been presented and discussed in two committees in open and closed session, and has been voted on and passed by both of those committees. Which, by the way, my colleague has voted yes in one of those committees. So that's what I'll say to that. Mr. Austin, I would like to give you the opportunity to address some of the concerns that were brought up in committee, if you so please.
Yeah, I, I was in earlier this morning in a meeting with the chairman, and he asked me to prepare this, that which is on your, on your page, on your desk today. And Kathy highlighted for you in red the new text that was added at the request of Finance Committee. So you can see clearly that's in there. It is in the document that's in your agenda packet, but it's, there's no highlighting in the agenda packet. It's a clean document. So this is to show you the text that was added at Finance Committee, just to make certain that, you know, if, if this agreement was to be approved and I was to be subsequently terminated at some point in the future, the agreement's over. There, there is no, there is no payout, there is, there's none of that. And that was some of the concerns, I think, that was, was raised. And it was never the intent to have that language in there, but this, I think, makes that very clear. The other language which I offer this morning is on the bottom of the first page in blue there. Because there was, again, some question about accrued sick time. I'm an employee in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, and all employees of the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund statewide are allowed to put accrued sick time to their pension when they retire, and only when they retire. Not when you transfer jobs or anything there, but when you, if you, if you retire, you are allowed to put a portion of your accrued sick time towards your, your pension, up to 240 days. That's always been my intent. That would be foolhardy for me not to do that. But this makes clear that intent, that 240 days of sick time will go towards my pension. I, like all county employees who have accrued 240 sick days, are allowed to sell that back at 50% each year, and I've been doing that for a few years now. So then, I, as I said here today, the chairman asked me yesterday, how many sick days do I have on the book? And the answer is 243. So there's not a, there's not a big surplus there over and above the 240. You know, I, I did hear that there was some, some questions about things that maybe I hadn't responded to. I take some exception to that. There was a, a request for a, a total compensation report that was requested at the Administrative Services Committee meeting in January. At the committee, the whole meeting in January, that report was provided to the requister. And I said, is this what you want? The answer was, thank you. Didn't hear any more about it. At the February Administrative Services Committee, there was several comments made about comparable positions, pure positions in the area. And it was a little back and forth there, but there was a request for staff, not me, for staff to prepare a, a, a report on comparable positions. Both Finance and Human Resources kind of scrambled that Wednesday afternoon and, and prepared at least a partial report of, you know, what some of the area positions were making. Again, that was available at Finance the next day and offered, but there was no interest in, in the report, and we still have it. So I, I don't know what other things I'm not providing that are being asked for. And I would appreciate your support on this. I, I want to remain your county administrator. You don't have to have a county administrator. You have a, you have an ordinance that says you have a county administrator, but that can change. I had a marvelous time being your county administrator, and I feel very fortunate to be your county administrator. But, you know, this is, that's, this is, this is what I would like to see in my employment agreement.
Ms. Greenow.
Thank you. And I want to say that this is not a discussion about termination or continuation of employment. This is a conversation about the process that was non-existent and that it is unfortunate that the previous board, especially when we were redoing the rules, I'm not sure where it would have fallen, was really made aware of the significance and the responsibility of this board representing the constituents and taxpayers of the county so that we actually had a representative process to go through. In the Finance Committee, before we went into executive session last Thursday, I asked, is this contract negotiable or is it a straight up or down vote as is? And you said that it was a straight up and down vote, that there were to be no amendments to the contract. Did I understand what you said in that meeting, which is on record?
You know, I don't know that I said it as, as much. I think that there was sort of a consensus that this wasn't, you, you said we're not negotiating this, and I think people tended to agree with you. I mean, I, I'm not there, I was not there to negotiate.
Okay, well, thank you. It is on public record. I asked you specifically, and you said specifically that it was a straight up or down vote as is. Is that still the case?
Yes. I, I'm really, this is, you know, we have, we have a an agreement in front of us, and this is the agreement I would like to see voted on.
I want to repeat back just to make sure that I understand what you said.
You're, you're not, you know, this is really uncomfortable for me.
May I speak, Pete?
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, I know your pattern. It can't be broken, but we'll try. So what I just heard you said was I asked, is this a negotiable agreement that we could negotiate as a board? Or is a straight up and down vote? And you just said that it is a straight up and down vote.
You're asking me to respond to an unknown, right? I'm not interested in reducing my benefits, if that is your question. So if you are interested in reducing my benefits, I, I would say this is a straight up and down vote.
Thank you for that answer. So my issue with this is that there is nothing in place for us to go through and to evaluate this employment agreement. I would not even say that this is related to performance in that we have no idea what the dollar amount of this contract is worth, what it costs the county.
We provided that to you.
We have no idea what the dollar amount of this contract is worth on here. There's nothing in the resolution. There's nothing about the impact on the budget. And so you're asking this board to pass something that's given the information that I did gather on, you know, from public record, from our records here at the county, about 1.5 million, which is maybe just fine. But how can I say to a constituent, yeah, you know, I'm not really, I know, we just, yeah, we voted for it, it was fine, it was just fine. And that's not what we're here to do. And we are in a time right now of the Doge. We are in ti, in a time of accountability. And what would be the problem with having maybe each committee have a representative and then have a third-party objective person like an auditor, like Shannon or someone from her department, to sit in to make sure that everything is quantified and understood? And then present it back to the board for discussion and vote? And it protects you, and it's, and it protects your integrity, and it protects the relationships here.
I, I didn't question my integrity, Ms. Greenow. You did ask about the impact on the budget, and I did respond that this is budgeted for. So there, there is no impact on the budget. The budget you approved for fiscal '25 includes compensation for a county administrator.
So we know the four-year impact of this contract, just like if I was going into any other contract coming through admin and finance. And, and I'm correct to understand that this is the first time that an employment contract has gone through the Finance Committee? Correct? Yeah, so in your four contracts, the first one to go to the, and, and I know, and I, I don't think anybody here is, is stating that because there could have been four votes on the admin committee to hold it back, that the following day it would go through the Finance Committee. I know, nobody would even think that. So we're not going there, all right? I just want to make that clear. So this is my problem, and because of this, not because of you, nothing at all about you, but that I can't vote on a four-year contract with an unknown impact and then stand to constituents and say, yeah, I do that to you. That's just the way politics works. And that's not right. This should all be in the open. It's all public information anyway. I don't understand what the problem is here.
It is public information.
After the fact.
Well, my salary, along with all county employees' salary, our, our total compensation is available online every year. You know, we, as an organization, we are required to put total compensation over $75,000 online every year. We do everyone.
I know.
We don't try and doubt, so.
I know. It's just that
A suggestion that somehow this is behind the scenes.
After the fact.
Well.
So, but we, you know, we, we will not agree on this. So
Okay.
There's no point in, in continuing this debate. It's, it's just, I mean, with all due respect, I cannot condone the process, and I cannot vote on something that does not have a price tag on it. It's just not right.
Mr. Gottermiller.
Yes, a bit of history is in order. First and foremost, the county administration administrator has a county ordinance. We, I mean, 20 years ago, 20-some years ago is when they, we adopted the idea that, and I say we, it was before any of us were here, adopted the idea that a county administrator would be the better way to handle things than the county board chairman. And, and understand this, before this, the county board chairman had the role of county administrator. That's what the job entailed. You, as a chairman, would have been doing all of those things. Many, many years ago, again, in the 90s, there was a decision that it made more sense to go to a professional administrator for most of those roles than to have it be the political role that the county board chairman faces. The county board chairman at that time negotiated and chose and made a recommendation to the rest of the board who the county board administrator would be. We've had, I think, four of them in my memory of people that have gone through and been county administrator. Peter has been our county administrator now for 19 years. This is not, he, he's done an excellent job. If you look at the actual salary change from what he's getting for a change salary, he's given up in this contract. The idea that if he was let go for whatever reason, he would have a parachute or a golden parachute, that's no longer here. He has a raise from his current salary from $237 to $250,000. It's a $13,000 raise on an annual basis. It is not a giant raise. We had, we were told in Administrative Services at one point in time, it was a 39% raise. I've yet to figure out how $13,000 out of $250,000, it's to 39%, but that's how far off we were. We also had, I mean, you know, you can look and compare things, but if you're going to compare to other counties, you need to compare apples to apples, not apples to oranges. Different counties do it different ways. Some counties still don't have a county administrator and let the county chairman do those things. I mean, Kane County is an example of that. They don't have a county administrator. Other counties, you know, still have the commission, commission form of government. Other counties have 12 members instead of, you know, whatever, 18. Each county's a little different. But the bottom line is, you know, I, I've, I've heard today now how it didn't go to places, it didn't get approved. We've answered the questions. They may not like the answers, but they are the answers. In the past, this has been the county board chairman's job. These last four or five years, we've, and we've increased and allowed the county, the administrative services or prior to that, management services to do the annual review. We've done an annual review on Pete every year. It's gone before the entire board. The entire board's had the opportunity, year after year, to weigh in on answering questions and the, and the surveys that we do every year to decide whether or not this should be what we're doing. He has done what we've asked him to do. I don't see a $13,000 a year pay raise as being the type of issue that requires us to project out four years. Yes, if he's here four years, he'll make a million dollars because he gets paid $250,000 a year. That's not an unusual amount of money for what he's in. And again, if you compare it up, I, I mean, you have, the Crystal Lake administrator is in the same category. It's just the town of Crystal Lake. It's not the entire county. I mean, and yet that's what the going rate is. I, I, you know, I'd, I'd love to be able to reduce this, but guess what? I don't want to start over either. And I don't believe this is a giant increase in pay. In fact, I know it's not. So any rate, I am in favor of going forward with this. I just saw the changes that, that the chairman asked us to do today, and I would support those changes. But this contract is ready to go forward. Thank you.
Dr. Sager.
Thank you, Chairman. With all due respect to my, my colleague, I want to say that I truly believe that the contract which is before us is a, a very appropriate contract and further importantly so, I believe that it's been derived in the right process and the right manner. This is not at all atypical when you consider a variety of major when you consider a variety of major administrative leadership from a professional basis, whether you're talking about colleges and universities, whether you're talking about cities, municipalities, whether you're calling it counties, others. This is the process that is used. And it is in which the head of the body meets with the primary employee because the primary employee is the only individual that the body employs independently. And so the head of the body meets with that employee, goes through the process of reviewing, then the elements of negotiation which are necessary to continue that contract into not just a single year, but future years. And then, in our instance, we have additional processes or opportunities which have been introduced by way of committee review, which in most instances is not done. The contract is provided from the head of the body, in this case, the chairman, sometimes the mayor, maybe the president to the board of trustees, but it's presented then to the board from those direct one-on-one communications. So this is not atypical. And to suggest, again, with all due respect, that we do not know what the amount of money is going to be, we certainly do. It's here, we know it. And as has been stated by our administrator, that certainly all of this information for all public institutions is open to the public. People know what this amount is. We have an approved budget, and this money is included. I think it is frankly, and with all due respect, it is unwarranted and inappropriate for us to go through this particular conversation when we have gone through appropriate communication with our committees, and there has been input at that level, which typically does not occur. I appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that Peter has been willing to go through this process. I apologize on behalf of myself, because I can't certainly do for the entirety of the board, but I apologize that you were put through this because I think it's inappropriate, it's out of line, and frankly, I think it lacks class. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. Kunkel.
Yes, I didn't have a lot on this, and garnering more and more. Because of the fact we're in a local election right now. Back up, I sat through administration, including executive session. And I was very frustrated with how the process, if you can call it that, started out for me and for this particular contract issue. Reading that back, my opinion and whether I'm upset about it, that is not germane to this. Being that we're in a local election, I've had the opportunity to be with several meet-and-greets, fundraisers and other events, and a very, very lackluster Super Bowl game made for lots of conversation. These conversations, two to one, ran in the negative to not do this contract. The two-to-one margin was, most people complained of the sheer dollars of this contract. But several people who were well-educated in our county, business people that I hold in high esteem, told me their problem was, for many years here, no one stated how many, many years here, the tail is wagging the dog. The fact that the administration runs the board and the board answers, that's all there is to it. That's what he believed. In fact, his comment to me was, "The board is a feckless bunch of sheep who are all narcissists just wanting to wear a name badge." And wow, as a non-politics guy and a first-time board member, that kind of hurt right here.
I will take an exception to that. I mean, what the item under discussion here today is the contract itself. And interjecting these kind of conversations are really highly inappropriate.
I'm telling you what the...
What I would ask you to do as chair is to stick to the agenda item that we're discussing and not interject your or other people's opinions. I would appreciate that.
So my constituents' opinions mean nothing to this? I'm asking, do my constituents' opinions then mean nothing towards this?
Those comments have nothing to do with the contract that we're discussing.
They do. I was speaking to them explicitly on this issue. Secondary...
The issue being discussed is the text of the contract itself.
Okay. Last thing, we have to be very careful about bringing up the past, dredging up the past. Joe's very good at it, and he has a lot of knowledge in it. But the past has ugly things too.
Mr. Kearns.
Well, I just want to be a little more cheery on this. And Pete, I think you've done a good job. And I've disagreed with you several times over the last, I don't know how many years it is anymore, but I've disagreed with you a lot on times, and you know that. But we can agree to disagree on things, and that is our job. And as board members, you can speak out, but I do think there's appropriate time. So my issue on the entire situation here has been, when I read, I'm not on the committees, okay? So when I read through the red line of the contract, I could not understand why Peter had removed the four-month safety net, basically. And I'm like, why would you do that? And, you know, and that, and I was told that that was your choice, that you did that, that you no longer needed that. And if you were terminated by the board, if in six months they had a vote and they terminated you, you were okay with that, and you didn't want the four months, you wanted compensation up until the date of termination.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
And...
I was just trying to offer something, you know, and that was, I think...
Okay. And the dollars, to me, is whether you want to vote for a contract or not, folks, is, to me, you all have your personal opinion and your constituents have an opinion on the dollars that they want to spend or that you want to spend on a contract. I personally support Peter. The dollars I can agree with because, to me, it's all spelled out that you're getting what the rest of the county employees get in vacation compensation, sick days, holiday and all that. You're getting paid in all of that, right? And the same. And so I don't have, and when they added in, when you added in the sick time not to exceed the 240 days here this morning, I was okay with that. Part of my whole questioning was, why would you want to get rid of the four months? You just explained it. And as I'm reading it, I thought, well, in the finance committee, I understand that they asked... And there's where the process did work on that side. They did ask for some changes, and it was agreed upon, that they asked for some changes, that it said that in there, you added line F, or they added line F, "Upon termination disagreement shall immediately cease to be in effect regardless of the termination, when the termination occurs." And that was added to it, and some other things that you added, okay? With an explanation of what in the contract A, B, C, D and E meant. All of that was in there. So one of the things, as I was reading, I said, but it didn't say that he didn't ask for compensation afterwards, you know, as I read that. And yet, if I were an attorney, I could fight that either way, I would believe, of the agreement shall immediately cease to be in effect upon termination. I thought, well, why wouldn't we just add a sentence there of "No additional compensation will be paid after the effective termination date"? Is that a problem? And do you have a problem with that? I don't know if you do. I won't put you on the spot. But I'll give you an out here. Because as I'm reading even further, and that exceeding 240 days kind of drew my eye to what might answer to my question, okay? The sentence before that, and I'm in Section 5, Item B, folks, if you're reading along. "The employee is entitled to accrue all unused leave without limit, and in the event the employee's employment is terminated, either voluntary or involuntary, the employee shall be compensated for all accrued vacation time, sick time exceeding 240 days, all paid holidays and benefits to date." That answers my question. Okay, it says "to date." It doesn't say he's going to be eligible for anything else after that. So in my thought process here today, that I appreciate you clarifying the 240 days on the sick time, or, yeah, sick time. I appreciate you, because it drew my, it drew my attention to not wanting to have to amend and add no additional compensation to be paid after that, because it's in there.
Thank you.
Okay? So, again, I do appreciate Pete. And I've said all along, and you know it, you and I argue on the floor once in a while, and it's, but it's an agreement to disagree, and that's how it should be between all of us. And we go on and we do our jobs. If at some point, for my fellow board members who are raising this issue about the contract and about, and about performance, you have that opportunity in this contract now. The opportunity's never been there before, other than you pay four months. That was put into last contract. But you have that opportunity to call a vote. And so, call the vote. Now, can we fix procedures about how we do this contract where maybe, you know, this board, shame on us in the past, you know, we talked about a little bit of the history. We've always asked you to write your own contract, right?
Yeah, this is, I think, only the fourth time that it's come before the full county board.
Yeah. And this is hard for you. You write your own contract. I'd like to see a procedure in the future. I do not want it changed, to make it very clear to everybody. I think it would be wrong and disingenuous for us to say, "Stop this process today and start over." I don't think it's fair to Peter, and I don't think it's fair to the board because we had a lack of procedure in place in the past. And I would call on the chairman at some point to try to correct that procedure of the contract being written, not by the administrator, but by whoever, if you run it through the state's attorney's office, in a negotiation with Peter.
Yeah, just by way back, this is from a model agreement. It's in the International City-City Management Association. Scott's reminding me, and that is what I used in 2005, working with the then-county board chairman and the then-finance chairman and the then-state's attorney. We put this together. It's been adjusted minorly, a little bit each time, in 2016 and 2021.
And Peter, there's a great explanation of how we got here, okay? There's the explanation. But nobody, we all want to yell at each other. I don't want to yell at each other on this. I want us to respectfully talk about these things and get the right answers of how did we get here? And so, there's my answer. I'm satisfied with this contract as it is today and with the changes that have been made at the finance committee. And I thank the committees, and I've said this to people who've complained about this procedure, your time to act is in committee. Your time to ask for changes is in committee. And you need to ask your questions of the committee chair or anybody else involved, and you need to act in committee and speak up and go through. You had the red line in your committee. You needed to read the red line and ask the questions on why those changes were made. And had that been done, I don't believe I'd be speaking here today. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell.
I'm not sure. I don't want to add a lot more. I think a lot was just said that I agree with, and I appreciate those comments. Just to kind of point out, this is a contract that just outlines, and the process is the process. It's been like, and it is a very typical process. It varies across agencies, but it's a very typical process. But renewing that process is a great idea. I mean, some things just need to be looked at again. But it's a contract that outlines the terms over the next four years. In that process, the administrator has removed the severance. That was a big deal, if you think about how those severances work. And his annual increases are linked to increases for staff overall. There is no special treatment here at all. So when we talk about this obligation for four years, keep in mind, the contract can be terminated. This is no different than if we had our staff stay as is for the next four years. Yeah, there's an obligation. That's why we have to be, that's why we have to be having great conversations when we make decisions during the budget process so that we are able to support those obligations going forward. So to tie it to a specific dollar amount, well, we have that across the board. We have salaries, we have infrastructure, we have capital. These are the things that we need to be budgeting for. This just simply outlines what the contract terms are over the next four years. And again, it can be terminated. I don't see the need for that. He's been doing a great job. I appreciate having him there and his expertise. I think he's done a great job. And yes, we're not always going to agree. And as Member Kearns has said, we can agree to disagree. But we need to work together. Thank you.
Mr. Scala.
I just don't want to add more than just some clarification. Pete had come to me and asked if his contract should be on the finance agenda. It had not been previously. And I felt that involving numbers, just like all the other contracts that we vote on, you know, that it should come to finance and I can't change what, didn't happen in the past, but, you know, could change present. So I did ask for it to come there. The changes that you see here redlined were items that the finance committee members thought could be better clarified through language. And Pete was there. And, you know, some of it was simply, what is your interpretation of what the language states? And Pete would, you know, offer that this is how I view it. And, you know, members on the finance committee simply said, "Hey, I think we can rewrite this language a little bit better so that that interpretation is more codified in actual language." And then, so those were all suggested to better clarify. The actual intent wasn't changed at all. It was just simply clarification language. And then naturally, this went back to the state's attorney's office to be reviewed with them so that, as a legal document. And so this is what you got here. So I not only applaud the members of finance committee who made these recommendations so that it would be more clear, so people like Mr. Kearns would be completely tickled pink with the new language, you know. But again, I think when you look at the process that we go through, anytime you can have clarifying language that makes things more crystal clear, that is a good positive outcome. So just wanted to offer that as information.
Okay, seeing no further comment, 16B to 11, Mr. Kearns.
Let me gather my thought, which one, 16B to 11? Oh, I just, when I read that about the adjustments to the general fund, I'm just asking for, kind of explain that so I understand it a little better. I didn't understand how we got here on this adjustment. Do you understand what I'm asking there?
Yes, I can answer that question. So, thank you for pulling this because there was a long discussion at Finance and Audit about how we're going to approach the '26 budget a little bit different. We're going to start earlier, try to give you as much information as we have, you know, throughout the summer, to make some of these harder decisions. And I think this particular resolution is really kind of impactful as we start into that discussion. So just to remind you a little bit about the process in the budget policy. When we're doing the general fund departments, we calculate their personnel, and then we do a 2% holdback for the large departments and a 1% for the smaller departments. And we keep that money within non-departmental. So then, when we get to the end of the year, we look and see, you know, if the large departments are over budget by 2%, you know, we'll move it out of non-departmental. And really, the idea with that is, you know, with 1,300 employees, we're trying to come up with the most realistic personnel budget possible. You know, you have turnover, you have vacancies. And so in the past, it's about a million and a half, the total holdback. And we only budget for half of that. And typically, we don't use any of it. So that was kind of the first thing that, I guess, worried me a little as we start to look at '26. You know, we've seen the increases year over year. And it's not just budget, it's really just the actual increases. And we talk about... We talk about more filled positions, mid-year compensation adjustments, and not that those are not important, because I think, you know, the mid-year compensation adjustments probably are playing a positive role in having less vacant positions. But you know, that, then that obviously affects the budget. So, all the departments across the board in the general fund were over budget. So I know there's only a few highlighted ones and I know we're always picking on the large departments, but what I did was I took the 650 that we already have built in, applied that, you know, across some of the smaller departments, and so that's where you see the adjustments in the general fund for the large departments, but that doesn't mean it was just them. And then some of the other special revenue funds. And also too, the special revenue funds, their personnel numbers include benefits. So that's why it's a little bit harder to look at like year-over-year growth, but if you focus on the general fund, that's just personnel. And so from 23 to 24 actual, there's an 8% increase and budget just didn't keep pace with that. But I think as we move forward through 25 and start to plan for 26, you know, we'll continue to see that number hopefully level off.
Thank you for that explanation, it makes sense. I just didn't understand it when I just read it, it's, thank you.
Ms. Greeno.
Yes, I want to thank Member Kearns for his question because I had not looked at it in that light. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, this is going from these different funds to the budget items for that organization. So, there's nothing going between departments or organizations, it's all going just specifically from their general fund to their IMRF funds, or FICA or whatever.
So the general, so FICA and IMRF funds-
P roll burden funds, yes.
Support the FICA and IMRF for general fund only. So the FICA and IMRF burden for the other funds is with, stays within those funds. So there's nothing moving, you know, from general fund to highway fund. It's all moving, so we've already incurred these expenses. I just wanted to bring you a final resolution after we got the accrual done, but it's just, you know, saying that if we would have had these numbers when we were developing the 24 budget, you know, the request for the utilization of fund balance would have been the amounts listed by fund, if nothing else changed.
Yeah, so what you're showing in here, the double entries are like within the highway department, they're, yeah, okay.
Right, so every budget entry has to be balanced, so it's just an expense and then saying it's using fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, seeing no further comment on that item, Mr. Kearns, 16B 32.
Okay, this is on the legislative committee and as Mr. Scala says, reading that, some of these, that are 400 pages, it's like putting a stick in your eye as you're getting through some of these. I want to compliment our law and government committee and the chairman on this one because the way this was presented and set up, and I've tried to pull it up and look at it, if you guys didn't read it, it's very well organized and splits up what they've come up with. You know, when I first got on the board, we didn't have this. Frankly, it stunk and it was horrible. But this committee and the chairman of this committee, Ms. Altough, I'll give a shout out, have done a great, great job in presenting what are, what we need to do from the state, you know, what we need to ask of the state, because we all complain about the state. And so, as I'm reading through this though, and one of my complaints has always been on this solar farm situation and everything, and so I wanted to ask Ms. Altough to give an update on that solar and wind and solar siting changes, that possibly what we're asking for and what she sees out there as a result of that.
Ms. Altough.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The simple answer is that there have been more bills filed trying to change this public act than anything else. Many, many legislators have recognized and have been contacted by not only county officials but by municipal officials at the difficulty in being held responsible for something that they have no regulatory authority over. So I am guessing that there will be many conversations had about moving forward and giving back some of that regulatory authority. As to what that will ultimately look like, I have no idea, but I will also note that it's not a priority to legislators. They've got the budget, they've got the transit system, they've got healthcare, they've got the fear of losing other regulatory authority from other areas, we're kind of down at the bottom of that list, but we have, we have the good fortune of having good legislators that work their legislation involved in the issue, so I'm hopeful.
Thank you, and I thank your committee for the work they're doing with our legislators, thank you just so much. That's all.
Okay, no other items pulled? Pete, you got a report for us today?
Yeah, quick, I wanted to talk about a handful of meetings that have taken place or will take place. Earlier this week, Iseko hosted a meeting with Samir Vohra, he's the director of IDPH. It was really interesting, we had six county people on the call, myself and Alicia, Melissa, Carolyn, Pam, kind of listening to IDPH's vision for public health in the coming year and kind of responding to some of the uncertainties in DC. So it was a nice meeting and I appreciated Joe McCoy pulling that together. Another series of meetings that's taking place, and it's referenced in your most recent copy of county news, is NACO is hosting now weekly meetings as the National Association of Counties tries to understand some of the changes that are going on in DC and how it's impacting local governments. There'll be another one this afternoon at 3 o'clock, so if anyone's interested, go on the NACO website and you can sign up or shoot me an email, I can send you the link. But this will be the fourth such meeting, I've been a part of two of them so far, and they're good, it's like 25 minutes, half hour, just kind of updating what we know and what we anticipate with a new budget likely to be approved in March. Tomorrow, I will be participating in the Collar County meeting on transit, these are meetings we've been having every two weeks for some time now, with Scott Hennings and myself and Alicia and Shailin and representatives from all the counties, trying to understand what's going on with transit reform. We're really going to react this week to the new labor bill that was submitted a week ago. It was fresh when we met last week and we all kind of agreed we needed some more time to digest. Scott Hennings has done a good job of breaking it down for us, so we'll be talking about that. Next week, there will be a meeting with Marengo officials and IDOT officials talking about the prospect of getting that train stop in Marengo for the line that will be going out of Rockford into the city, so anxious to have that. In two weeks, on the 24th, myself and Chairman Bueller and Scott and Mark Picos and Shailin, we're all going to be going down to Marengo to meet with their mayor and their incoming mayor, to kind of talk about some of the transition that's taking place in Marengo right now. They'll be welcoming a new village administrator at some point and saying goodbye to their current administrator, but with that transition and with the grant that's coming down at 2390 and commit spurring interest now in pulling utilities down there, we just want to make sure we're, making sure nothing's falling through the cracks in this time of transition and introducing ourselves and wanting the county to be as supportive as we can with Marengo during what's going on. Finally, I'll mention WBPM radio interviewed our own Andy Rose from McDot yesterday on weather and Andy did a great job and just wanted to congratulate our representing on WBPM. Thank you.
Thank you Pete. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. Scala makes the motion, Ms. Altough seconds, all in favor say aye. Have a good day.